First on our agenda is C. Corey, St. James Place.
Me.
Young lady.
Yes.
Mrs. Corey?
Yes.
How are you?
I'm fine.
What are we looking to do? Repose ice cream stand?
Yes. We bought the Arthur R. building.
Go on.
Yes.
To familiarize the board members. This is located on what street?
Twenty-eight St. James.
Twenty-eight St. James.
Yeah, right on the trail beside it.
Okay.
And he wanted to make a cafe and we decided on an ice cream stand. And we do not want to do any additions. We strictly wanted an outside stand, a walk-up stand. No sitting inside or anything.
So as you're walking up to the building?
We, yes, and we thought the best thing would be to walk to the side of the building. We made little sketches. This is the, like, the first floor. Yeah, that's the first floor. So we're thinking, here's the trail. So we would have our serving windows here. And this would be for our ice cream, our supplies, the first floor bathroom. And then we want to do a garden in the back. So that that's where the seating would be, back here. And have fence, nice fence. We're in Teflon, you know, we got an old house. So we put a nice, you know, fence, flowers, seating in the back. Anyway, and then upstairs.
That is second copy.
And that's upstairs.
So that's, okay.
Yeah. An apartment upstairs as Art wanted to do, so.
Okay. This is a work session?
We looked into some, Art thought all the way through according to Ted. And then he didn't come for final approval. I don't know why, but. He wanted to do a shed in there?
Well, he showed, he came in a couple of times. The second time we came in, if I'm not mistaken, Michael, he proposed an addition on two sides, which looks like it's closed.
Wesley, how is that arranged?
I crossed this out.
Did the public hearing, but he never came back again.
He got a variance?
He did, he got it.
Michael, what's the zoning?
I believe it's CS.
It is CS, A D D.
And the A D D, yeah.
We never got comments from all the exam, the last time we were out. That's one of the things that happened.
That's basically it.
I see what you're looking to do. And this is, end of June. This is still an open application.
I don't think so, but the variance has expired. The last time it was on was February 2nd, 2005.
She needed variance?
She doesn't need a variance. I assume the variance had to do with building.
These additions.
So I guess that need goes away. There was a fee in lieu of parking issue that was never resolved because there's no parking.
There's no on-site parking, but this is, shall be parking. This is all parking.
By the trail?
Yes.
Well, lower fee for parking?
Well, look, there used to be a provision of the ordinance that said if your business was within so many feet of, at that time, I think, is that a municipal parking lot? This may be, they'd have to look at that again. It was an issue the last time.
It was. So we have to look at that. The use is permitted. But the apartment upstairs is permitted as well.
Yeah, it says as an accessory use, you can have residence, residential use above commercial.
So to bring Mrs. Corey up to date, where does she stand?
Well, the use above the residential is a conditionally use that requires a public hearing. Though it's a new application, since you had the public hearing in 2005, I don't want to consider that to have been the public hearing. If there's no new construction, and I assume that was the reason for the variance, I don't know that for sure. Then it wouldn't need to go back to the zoning board. I can take another look at the fee in lieu of parking, but I know showed that there was going to be a fee paid in lieu of parking. I don't know why they didn't pursue that issue at the zoning.
This is the exact plan that.
I know. But there were certain conditions that were attached to it.
Right.
And one was lieu of parking, but we do have municipal parking on the side of that, which.
There's also parking on the street.
There's also parking on it, yes. The two additions are gone. Michael, on the, on the apartment up on the second floor?
Yes.
It has to be a public hearing?
Yeah, it's a conditionally use, but you held a public hearing on the Arthur R..
Feds, and it was feds?
No, you never approved it, you never came back. You had to hear it.
And at that time, they were also proposing the apartments above?
That's what you're saying.
Yeah, yeah. That was what the public hearing was for. The issues that were discussed at the hearing were litter, parking. You then said that you extended a 10-day written comment period. I think there were people that didn't make it to the hearing. And then we never heard your mark to our again. So you never approved it. And he's never come back.
That was in 2005.
Two thousand five.
Was it originally a CS zone or was it changed?
No, that was CS.
No, I don't think it was changed.
In CS for a long time.
Really? The public hearing was closed?
Yes.
So it's, it's, what members, it was a public hearing? And it was closed? Two thousand five?
Is there any statute of limitations on this?
Oh, there is. Michael, what, what is the statute of limitation of this?
Well, if you remember, I gave you the UNICO letter today. There's a couple, if it had have been an approval, it would have been good for, would have had to start construction within a year. And there would have been an anticipated completion. The problem that I have, I guess you can say that the application was never withdrawn, it's still alive. But this is a new applicant and a new use. It's similar. The building is now not to be enlarged. Before it was a refreshment stand, now it's an ice cream stand. It's not dramatically different. I think you might be able to say that since you had a public hearing on the earlier application, you can consider that a public hearing on this. That's up to you. I think it's a stretch, but I don't think it was a huge problem at the hearing. There were a lot of complaints about hangout, litter, parking, so.
Correct.
I think it would be safer, it's six years old, to just have the public hearing and then.
Well, we need an application, and there's a couple of things we have to look at. The minimum lot size is supposed to be 5,000 square feet. And this lot is at 3,300 square feet. I don't know how we addressed that last time. And I don't know if the minimum lot size changes, if, and that's.
Has the code changed since then?
No, I mean, I'm saying if you go to a residential over commercial, if there's a different minimum lot size, that's for commercial use. So I think we need to look at an application so that Mike and I have a chance to go through these things and we can look at.
This is a work session, Mrs. Corey. And what we're gonna have to do is we're gonna fill out a new application on this. Do these plans be utilized?
Well, she took somebody else's plans and photocopied them. So you're asking me is.
Do you have a site plan of this?
You can waive the elements that aren't shown and accept this if you wish. But if there's an issue about lot size or dimensions that aren't properly shown, somebody may need to do that.
So they gotta be verified.
Well, I think it would be easy to go back to whoever prepared this and ask them just to update it to show what you want to do. It should be easy enough.
It's land.
Okay.
Who was the engineer?
Jim Diana, land.
Land engineering? Well, you're gonna have to get a copy of this. Without.
This is the front page.
I mean, there should be a set of plans.
There are.
But I mean, for this application, we need to take those plans and.
I just wrote with Jim Diana.
What you have to, have to eliminate is what you're not going to put in this hearing. Okay. If there's any, anything else additional going in. And the use is going to be mixed use. It's gonna be commercial, resident, so, which are.
What do you propose?
The footage may be different, so it may be a problem.
What do you propose to do to the exterior of the building?
No. Just put it back together again. It's all gutted, stripped.
On the interior?
And the exterior.
The exterior, the exterior is in the architectural design district. That was a piece that wasn't tended to before. Wish you had known the application.
Whatever he says we're supposed to go on, we would do.
But there is, there is a guideline for that.
Right. That's what Peter.
Well, the village has a guideline.
With Weldon House. Oh, yeah? He's, his nickname's Pete. But his name is Weldon.
So you're gonna have, you're gonna have to establish your application. Get the drawings, eliminate this. Actually have, what is the fellow's name? Diana? Jim Diana from Land Engineering contact. Like, basically, we've gone through quite a bit of it already. I know you're with it.
The parking, they should be more concerned. Jerry's saying, sit.
The, the parking, I think, I'm sure you addressed that. Parking is, is, but I think in your engineer contacts, all these questions, what to him can be able to identify.
So what I have to do is do an application and get that prepared.
Ten dollars.
And then contact Jim. And then I do contact Art.
Get on our agenda again.
Yeah, Jim will update that.
Now, since it's in the A D D, you, he'll know, he's gonna have to notify Weldon App. And what colors you're gonna use, the certain finishes on the building because of what's located, we have to follow this. Also, excuse me, Jerry. Is this gonna push it back a second month because we're gonna go for a public hearing as we reset?
Do we have to go to that? Public hearing, yes. I was like, what are you saying? I was saying that if we, you know, if we don't demand a public hearing, was it different usage, that's why?
Well, what was he doing?
Public hearings require, what I said is it wanted to say that since you had one six years ago in another application.
We don't want to use that. What was it, an ice cream parlor and coffee shop? Who did all of that?
There were certain conditions that had to be.
Before that. For another month, then she goes back, can't she? We say, okay, now that we have all your stuff and all, and now we throw a public hearing for another month. You know what I'm trying to say?
It wouldn't result in.
Yeah, but she's hard to sell ice cream in summertime, not in winter.
But here it is, June. We don't have an application yet. So I don't know what.
You really can't set up a public hearing. You have to work, you have to build the building.
Have a formal application, so it's not what you can do. Because it's not even official. So she has to come back in July.
In other words, you're looking.
Probably looking at August.
I'm just trying, I'm trying to move through. I know he's ready to go, but we have to follow this.
Right, so I have to wait, he can't do anything?
Well, the interior work, interior work.
Right, we've got a building permit for that, sure. The exterior she can't work on? Well, you gotta get the A D D review.
It's gotta be reviewed. Our previous application never went through the A D D. That was a missing staff. And he had, the architect was thirty years.
To review it. But, you know, focal may be made to him too. I'm just saying that she should be on board with that as well. Of course, she's working on the interior, she should get on board with the exterior too. It's not preferable for another one.
Yeah, yeah. As soon as she gets things, she'll, she'll just go.
Well, I think if you're. Engineer speaks to Mr. Tully, he will give a guide.
I agree. Yeah, I think everybody is pretty much in favor of it.
I'm trying, I'm trying. It's a work session, try to comment there.
Glad to see them develop together, is what I'm seeing.
We want to see it happen.
Good, we want to see it happen.
Oh, good, good. We do too. Okay, thank you.
Thank you very much. Frank Zellner, 41 Prospect Avenue. Did I open me? Yes, I did. Glad you kept track of it.
How are you?
How are you? I'm glad to hear that. What can we do for you?
I'm looking to do an addition on the, currently in the back of my house. I meet zoning board in the last 10 years. It's a new law, but it's providing for private, it's very low. Instead of just the normal zoning, it'd be thirty feet off that property, ninety fifty. That's the law. Won't leave until it becomes a property by the current.
This is what it's proposed. Where is the cemetery?
See, this right here.
Cemetery's in this area.
This is. Took pictures, let me see what it looks like. Not gonna see much. That's the cemetery right there.
That grass line, the tree line?
Yeah, right here. This is, this, yeah, this is the back part of it. This is looking over my fence right here. Nope, I don't, I'm not even coming near it. This is my back property right here. I'm gonna be all the way over here. This is, look, it's. Yeah, not anything will do.
Going through this forty-one years.
Prospect Avenue? This is, is it proposed additional here? This is the cemetery. There's behind me. This is what I want to do. I have my thirty-two foot, I have enough, I have thirty-two. These are the regular zone age, but because of the, the new zone opened in the last ten years, it's fifty feet.
Can you show me a picture here?
This is the cemetery.
This is the cemetery?
That's the cemetery. My neighbor thinks it's his.
It's his cemetery?
No, it's not. It's actually, Ed Conner had found it, so he's, he's researched it, everything. It's looking very good. Yeah, as far, I mean, I couldn't tell that to be honest with you.
There was a letter from, sorry, there was a letter that came in from Ed Conner?
Yeah. That's yours, yours.
Okay, so you question, oh, he was buried there? Ed said that, that it's the Wilkins Cemetery, Ed, you want to speak to that?
Mr. Conner?
Mr. Chairman?
How are you?
Fine, good to see you.
It's always a pleasure to see you. You enlighten us on this cemetery, I didn't know it was there.
There's not much on it, other than what's in the letter. There's no deed on it filed with the county on that parcel. But there is a lot there, and, you know, how, how that lot was delineated originally, I have no idea. It does exist.
And it's not registered?
No.
With Orange County or the state?
No.
Ed, you know, you know, the Lord talks about the Townsend Cemetery on Prospect. This is a different cemetery than that.
That's correct.
Yeah. Townsend is lower down across.
Okay, so this is a different cemetery.
This is project.
Okay, is there anybody interred there? No?
There's no, unless you do a family, you know, search of the vicaries or something.
First, the Wilkins have been buried over at Slate Hill. Anybody that's really related, times, maybe it was Wilkins or Villagoshian, maybe the monitor team's buried over there. Anything that I've looked into or has looked into, I've never found that anybody has been buried there. I guess there is no headstones there.
Who maintains this lot?
My neighbor thinks it's his property.
All of it?
He tries to detect its relevance.
Yeah. He thinks it's his property.
It's not even like a portion of it that he's maintaining, he's taking.
Yeah, his, his property's here, my property's here, okay? His property is here. And he swears it's the L pointing behind him, mine is his, which is the cemetery. So as you can tell, he's got his shed on the property, he's got his rakes and everything, and he's got chairs he sits out there with.
We just have more conversation?
Yeah. What was the answer you did?
How many headstones, I'm sorry. There's no headstones there at all?
No headstone whatsoever.
So how'd you know it was a cemetery?
Right, that's, that's my question.
Because when I finished, my person moved in, and my neighbor explained to me there was a cemetery there that he knew about. And I started doing much research, like, find. There was not a really defined. It was just that, basically, on some maps, you're in there, and on other maps, no, it says cemetery care of Village of Goshen.
What's the name of this map? I'd like to see what. You don't, you don't have a site plan?
Site plan?
Is the separate, is the separate tax lot?
Yes, it's got a separate lot, I've got.
And, and who's you registered as the owner of that property?
Nobody.
There's no, it says the Village of Goshen or something?
Yes. On certain papers, it says care of Village of Goshen. But there's no deed whatsoever on the property.
And what, the neighbor's lot, we should.
Yeah, there's no deed attached to his property, so it says here. He swears it is, but there is no deed in the county right there.
And it's well.
Yeah, it's landlocked. Where on Prospect is this? If you come up, right, where's the rest of these houses? It's there right there, come up to the top of the hill. Directly in front of you is my neighbor's house, which is Larry Goode. I live directly next to him. It's basically to the right. There's a right-of-way that goes between his property and his neighbors that are left to him that comes all the way down the road.
There's a by-level up there.
The by-level would be four houses down from me up. I have, it's fenced in, it's self-fenced in, there's nothing to go back to, it's a cemetery.
The situation we're in, Michael. We have, the applicant actually has to go to the zoning board, appeals board to me.
I think they may need to go to the village board. The problem is, the, the section is not in the zoning chapter. And the zoning board only has the authority to grant variances from provisions of the zoning chapter. And there's no reference here to who can grant any relief. Now, the cemetery is not listed in the chapter, but the section says, this is not an, you know, an all-inclusive list. And any burial ground is covered by the provisions.
From the state.
Well, it doesn't, just says any burial ground. Ed's letter tells us this is, this is indeed listed as a cemetery on the Real Estate Atlas of Orange County, nineteen eighty-five edition.
But you know what, Michael, as you read this, though, it says, it says, any and all development activities within fifty feet of the cemetery shall be subject to the review and approval of the planning board.
Planning board, yeah.
So we're within fifty feet.
That's right.
So he can build within.
I thought there was also a setback. Couldn't be closer than? Again, I didn't have.
It says the building inspector shall not issue a building permit that is located within fifty feet of any burial without first consultation with the planning board. No, I think I was just reading this myself for the first time.
And it sounds like you just did this.
What do I have here?
You wanna go on extended?
Thirty. I have thirty-two feet to this point.
But you want to extend it?
I'm gonna be within, village code is owning thirty feet. I'm within village.
Art's art, it just means these are site plans, so they need an application, and you need to.
And I did, I did everything with that equal site plan.
Et cetera. It says that Ed has to provide consultation?
Yeah.
Doctor, we can.
Kind of tried to jump them on to get you guys as much as could. I mean, I guess it says here, it says upon any word in its sole expression.
Okay, so it's just a site plan review?
Yes.
Have you reviewed this?
I don't have, I just have some, I don't have the plans.
I gave everything to Teddy.
Five minutes, he's smug.
So Mr. Zeller, go back to square one.
Sure. Families in growing. I have a nineteen-month-old daughter, we're down to eleven bedroom space right now. We're looking to put a two-story addition off the back, a large family room downstairs and two bedrooms upstairs.
Should these simple ones, they.
So you're ending on sixteen by twenty-four?
Eighteen by twenty-fourteen.
So you got eighteen?
Yeah. Yeah, as far as the city. What happened was, to be honest with you, I brought it to Teddy's attention. Teddy was ready to, rightfully committed, wasn't even aware of the law. And I said, Teddy, I'm just gonna be honest with you. And I kind of like slide by. Come six months down the road, I heard the house sold, and somebody said something. But to be honest with you, I know we're looking at the law. I got to fish, what do we need to do?
You have to review this?
Well, not really, but I think, I think we should change the name of this. It says survey of the property, I would just, I'd done a site plan of the property, and I would put a book table on here. That shows the setback dimensions. And I would make some reference, if the planning board deemed it acceptable, that, that, that the distance of thirty-two feet was approved by the planning board. So that we have a record.
To grant a site plan, you have to send a joint notice, so I can send that to Mr. Trump. You'd have to waive the hearing.
Lots of, what, what members?
Say waive the public hearing?
Who's he bothering?
Well, well, maybe it's, it's not his property over here, and then it's questionable whether it's. Sanctioned cemetery, which you're saying it isn't. Well, there's people living in that, or residing in that area. We know that the neighbor is using the property, but he doesn't own it. The village owns that property.
The village stake it out.
But Ed's letter says that he's listed as a cemetery in the arch.
It is? Ed?
Yes. Mike's from where, my neighbor?
Well, obviously, they're not.
Who shares this?
That's his. Oh, that's mine. That's mine. Sorry.
So we're saying waive the public hearing? Well, two, what members? I say waive, what's that?
I'm okay with waiving the hearing, but I agree that the village board needs to be brought in on this and realize the village's responsibility.
Of the neighbor or of the property?
Of the property, and that the village has responsibility.
Waive the public hearing? All right. But on a set of drawings.
Mike, do we need a motion to waive the public?
I think you should.
Unless you, unless you want us to set your neighbor straight, so he'll get his shed off of the.
My wife is at home, patiently waiting. She has been very good at waiting for this addition within limited amount of space we have in the household. So I mean, that was not hold anything up by setting him straight. I know Teddy said he does want to, after this is all said and done, to go do it and take care of it. He does know that the neighborly store is, there's plenty of issues with him.
I make a motion to waive the public hearing.
You can prove it, it's on paper.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye in favor? We still have to notify the joint board.
Mr. Zeller, I'll prepare a notice, I'm gonna send it to you, I have your address. You're gonna have to get a list of people within the distance that can help you here in the village draw. And just mail it and present us with a, a letter that says you mailed it, who you mailed it to. Maybe use schedule for your mail.
And it'll be on the agenda next month. What, I'm sorry, what, did you say we're gonna have a public hearing?
No. The only requirement is, no matter what, you mail the notice.
I wish I had that properly.
Sorry. Father, excuse me. Father, you wanna reiterate what you said?
Well, I have, yeah, no, I don't. I have the surveyor, he'll give me a call a little more, I think it'll be quick to that we're sharing, and that we're going to communicate directly. How do you want to communicate to the village board, the fact that this has been brought to our attention?
Let's do it after we take care of it.
No, 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 I think we need to do it simultaneously. Can you write a letter to the village board?
Village board indicating that they own a piece of property that they're maintaining.
That should be stayed out as well, so that the adjacent neighbor to know it's property.
Okay. And to get back to us within thirty, if they have any questions? You want to be on the agenda the next month?
Make sure you do that early, if there's an early deadline.
Well, this is tomorrow.
And then, Mr. Downer is going to try to research as much as possible.
His spare time?
He's been looking for quite a few examples.
He's totally overgrown.
Well, he's the neighbor's knowing it.
Besides the lot that he owns, that's the cemetery that you've emoted by him.
He's a very considerate man. Yeah, nice betches. Wow, we'll notify the village, let's get on the agenda next month.
Okay?
Thank you.
Quick check.
I'm sorry? This is fine by me.
How about the lighting? Are you happy with the lighting?
Is the air conditioning just as good?
I only thought that was intentional.
To keep you in the dark?
I'm not going to go there.
Look at the staff.
You could turn on the light. There is a switch.
There's a switch, are you fellows nervous back there?
Yeah, why don't you move up to the front row? If you want to, if you want to set up. Yeah, you'll be on the seat, I just worry about anybody being honest. Yeah, I believe it.
You don't you have a voice?
Just for board certification, we're here this evening to remove the application law. So what we intend to do is...
Gentlemen, no side talking. Let the gentleman have his.
After his talking?
He just got to play the ball.
That's okay. You can stand up the ball if you want.
We're going to bring up a status report for yourselves, as to where we are. We have been in contact with the professionals, and there's some interest this evening, I think, in determining what consultants the village may be interested in retaining, and further examine the application, and we're interested in moving along with, obviously, the outside agencies, state included, so we can process the application. But at this time, I'll give a floor, if you will, and a quick check will give you a brief update of status at present time.
Good evening, Keith Cahill with Bowler Engineering. Since the last time we were here and gave you an...
Can you bring a closer?
Sure.
Is that better?
I can't do that.
Wait a minute.
In general, I gave you a rundown of what we're proposing, and nothing has changed in terms of proposal. The size of the building, the number of pumps, the location of everything is all the same. Just as a recap, we're still proposing a 6,924-square-foot convenience store with a canopy that has nine fuel dispensers underneath of it, that'll be eating fuel in positions. Two of the dispensers, one, just for reference, I'll use north to the top, and left and right, east and west. The northwestern and northeasternmost dispensers, outermost, would also have the ability to pump diesel, one dispenser with two nozzles there for that. We have four underground storage tanks, and parking in around it, ten-by-twenty parking stalls, sixty-two stalls total, the ordinance required sixty. We have the primary entrance off of the connector road, Seventeen M. It essentially has a designated left turn lane and a right turn lane for exiting movements, and a entrance lane. As I described before, we are in a flood plain, we're filling the flood plain, however, we're doing excavation in around the site, and we actually provide a benefit to the overall flooding condition, providing more volume of flood storage on site. As part of this application, as I mentioned, we're at the front of FEMA to relocate the existing floodways that are delineated for the tributary to the Rio Grande and the Rio Grande, which are on the west and the east side of the proposed development. Leonard Jackson is the consultant that actually did the FEMA maps for FEMA. We hired them to amend the study, and basically, the FEMA maps have done a hundred-thousand-foot look, we zoomed it into like a ten-thousand-foot right on the quick-check site, and that's why they can make these adjustments. And that's going through the review process. We just recently got our second round of comments from FEMA. There's five comments that were dated, I think, on February 2nd, and Leonard Jackson feels that the comments are relatively routine, they will be resubmitting in the next two weeks. And we're hopeful that by the end of this year, we'll have all the things addressed with FEMA and be able to proceed with, you know, the rest of the application. Now, that doesn't mean we're not moving forward with everything else, we are proceeding with DOT. If we get a neck deck, we can proceed with D E C in regards to the wetland buffers that we're requesting permits for, the disturbance towards the D E C. We've had numerous conversations with the D E C, going through it in detail what we're proposing, and verbally, and in theory, they're on board with what we're looking to do here, so again, we feel that from a permitting standpoint with D E C, we'll be able to achieve the permits that are required. Couple updates, D E C we have filed, we have our first round of comments from them, and we're hopeful that we would be being able to obtain approval from DOT before the end of this year, which is actually good news, because when the last time I was here, the initial feedback we got from DOT is potentially an eighteen-month process. So that's positive news, so that's good. We're going to be finally back to D E C, excuse me, DOT in about two to three weeks, from based on the information they're looking for, given that Mr. Levo's here, our traffic engineer, to give you further detail before request. In regards to the zoning board, we've gone to the zoning board for our variances for signage, and we have obtained approvals for that. I can give you a rundown quickly on what we have approvals for, and I have exhibits showing the signage that was permitted. You may recall that on the, due to the presence on both, a frontage on Seventeen to the rear of our site and the North Connector Road, we have signage on both sides of our property, and that really generated the need for variances and deviations from your ordinance. Essentially, we have a free, two freestanding ID signs. One ID sign is along Seventeen, and that was permitted through variance. The ID sign along North Connector Road, we've modified to a monument sign. Both of those signs are the same size and provide the same information. The one on the Seventeen side is what you, I would consider more of a standard gas station sign that has the two posts that stand out, and I can show you detail, it was granted through the variance granted for. And then, the one along Seventeen N is a monument sign sitting on a brick base, low to the ground, landscaping in and around it, looking more appropriate for the road, this road versus the highway frontage. On the building itself, we have two signs, again, one on the south face, one on the north face, again, requiring the variance, again, because of the two frontages and the variances were granted. And then on the canopy, you can see the skew that the canopy sits at, and to get visibility, you can't place it, one sign on the canopy to get visibility from both directions on Seventeen M, so you can see we had to face it, and I'll call it the northwest face and the northeast face, we have two canopy signs, and again, we got the variance that was requested.
What's the height of the sign facing Route Seventeen?
You know what, let me grab the sign.
Is it on this set of drawings?
Yes. The freestanding sign, that, and now, considering the ID sign that's facing Seventeen, is on this detail to the right side, it's eighteen feet high, the word "Quick Check" in their logo, eighteen to the top, to the top, yes.
Quick check?
Quick check.
Yes, yes, you were referring to as a quick one.
Yes.
You're going to sell gas at two or thirty-four?
Wouldn't that be fantastic? Every time I bring that down, everyone says, can you maybe make sure, you can get the approval as long as you do those prices. I try that routine, too. I actually try to explain the price.
Next year. That's the price the next year.
Right.
It's a half gallon, I think.
And this is an internally illuminated sign, and it also has the LED price-changing component. Where this is located, basically, they can change it from inside the store and change it, not having the maintenance aspect.
What's eighteen foot wide?
To the top.
What's the width?
Six foot six.
And how tall of the back of property is that? Are you showing it on these drawings?
Yes. If you can look at the corner of the building, it's right at the, between the two parking bays, and one that would be, I would call it the southwest in the southeast corner, the southern corner.
Is this it right here?
Yes. That's it. And if you look in the site plan sheet, which I think is five, sheet five, it dimensions it and shows it precisely where it would be located.
Do you have to review this?
They're in the process of reviewing, I think it's sheet five. That'd be a, okay, no.
I think this is it.
That's it, and then the distance off of the right of way.
Is this it over here?
Yes. And that's the distance off of the right of way.
Now, the sign is, did you say eighteen feet?
Eighteen feet, yes.
The sign itself?
To the top.
How was the width of the sign?
Six foot six. Six foot six, and it has a nine-foot-three-inch clearance.
It's eighteen feet from the ground?
Yeah, from grade to the top.
The sign itself is not eighteen feet?
Oh, no, no, I'm sorry. The total height is eighteen. The sign itself is seven-foot-nine by six foot six. That gives you the fifty square feet. I'm sorry, I didn't...
You said the sign is eighteen feet out of the ground.
To the top of it, yeah, sorry for that, sorry for that, just to be clear. To the highest point of the sign is eighteen feet above grade.
The error was in my question.
The overall area is seven, the dimension of the actual sign, seven foot nine vertically, six foot six wide, and hopefully we use the math right, it's fifty square feet. I want to show you the look of the other freestanding sign, or I'll call it the monument sign. In the top right-hand corner, that is the sign that's proposed along Seventeen M. So you can see it's on a brick base, I'll see, you'll see it's located in a landscaped bed area, and then again, the print is essentially the same, forgive the color tones, it's a little different, but they're intended to be exactly the same. Quick check, pricing, two dollars and thirty percent.
That's the total height?
Excuse me?
The total height?
The total height is ten foot eight inches, it's a three-foot base, and then...
That's out on Seventeen M.
That's out on Seventeen M, yep, and if you look...
And that's also LED digital?
It's right here. Yes.
It's also right?
This also has the LED price and changeability for the three, for the four prices.
And what other signs do you have?
Excuse me?
A canopy.
You have a canopy?
Yes. The sign in the top left-hand corner is the canopy sign. There is a sign can, those letters sit flush to the face of the canopy, unlike the mole, mole of the channel letters that sit off the face of the canopy. This is built right flush to the face of the canopy, internally illuminated. The sign area is two foot one and a half inches high, that would be the smallest vertical dimension, times, or let me refer to the largest dimension of the queue, times the length from the word "Quick Check" to the outer end of the queue is ten foot seven and a half, so the square footage is twenty-two point five seven square feet.
One sign on the canopy?
Two signs, two signs on the canopy. There's one...
Located?
Yeah, they're on each corner, on the corners of the canopy.
It's this direction facing?
Yeah, so you have visibility from either side as you approach. So that's the canopy sign.
So where would they?
Of the corner, yeah, there's a post internally illuminated, quick-check sign pointing to this corner, which would provide, I'll call it the western face, or, excuse me, the eastern face, so as you're driving west, you'd be able to see the sign. And then on the opposite corner, as you're heading west, you'd be able to see the sign on the opposite side.
Is this similar to anything you have out in Middletown, Dolson Avenue?
Yes.
Same thing?
Yes.
Which one?
Yeah, we have the same signage on both.
Eleven, East Main Street, Dolson.
Yes.
So it's pretty much the same?
Dolson Avenue.
It's nothing...
The placement of the building might be different, right?
Yep, and then on the, on the building itself, we have the quick-check word in letters that are sticking off the sign.
Facing?
Two sides, one facing the canopy, or would be visible to North Connector Road, and then on the rear of the building, it would be facing Route Seventeen.
So you have two signs facing Seventeen.
One facing Seventeen plus the ID sign, and then you have the, the ones on the building, ones on the highway, and then on the building itself facing Seventeen. And again, it's similar print of what's on the canopy reversing, meaning the color is going to be green, and that is channel letters that would stick off the building approximately twelve inches.
I have no doubt that we'll be able to find it.
Is there a sidewalk, please?
That's coming up. From South Street.
At this time, we do not have proposed sidewalks along the North Connector. And I'll let the traffic engineer mention what, if DOT's had any comments on that to date or not. Because we are, we do need to provide guide rail along that, and shoulder widths and things with thorough width of right-of-way, maybe a challenge, and also you have environmentally sensitive areas that were immediately adjacent to with slopes that drop off the side, so it would be a challenge to do that, but again, I'll let the conversation from DOT, the update from the traffic engineer.
Are there any other comments or questions, Mr. Cahill?
What's the line in the middle of the road? Is that a crosswalk? What's that dark line coming out?
That's the connection for the water, and we anticipate water and gas getting from across the street.
Any other questions, board members?
No, I just want to hear about the traffic. You're ready?
Traffic studies coming up. Game to the right, please.
Good evening, Charles Levo from Stonefield Engineering and Design. Because before you, a few months ago, I think we spoke preliminarily about the traffic analysis and some of the results that we found. Also, prior to making application to the DOT, we made that application, as Mr. Cahill stated, we have received comments from the DOT regarding the project. Just quickly to go over what some of the improvements are on the DOT jurisdiction, we're proposing a new left turn bay as you're traveling along the connector road, so that vehicles can pull out of it through travel stream, wait in that left turn bay, and then make the turn into the site driveway. Also, we are proposing a new driveway along the North Connector Road that would allow for left-out and right-out separate turn lanes. What you're seeing in a darker shade of gray is actually the widened section of pavement, so that's an area of pavement that doesn't exist today. There'll actually be a widening pushed down in a southwesterly direction to create more of a pavement section. There'll be new guide rail provided along that, as well as the site is graded down from where the roadway exists. With regard to sidewalk, the Department of Transportation typically looks at whether or not sidewalk is appropriate, depending on the functional classification of the roadway and what that road actually serves. If there's areas where there's bicyclists or pedestrians, a lot of times in downtown areas where you have state highways, main streets, and things of that nature, you'll find more of those improvements. But because this is really a connector road between ramps and the soon-to-be interstate system, I-86 here, they are not seeking to provide sidewalk along this frontage. In addition, as Mr. Cahill mentioned, one of the challenges here... In addition, as Mr. Cahill mentioned, one of the challenges here is to be able to preserve the nature of the roadway system with the guide rail and the slopes that are in this area. So for the purposes of just the function of this road as a connector roadway between highways, the DOT is not seeking to promote or encourage pedestrian traffic along the roadway system. This is really going to be a, it's going to continue to be a vehicular-driven piece of roadway rather than other areas where you might want to encourage or foster pedestrian traffic flow. So our anticipation after the first review letter that we received from the DOT is that this process would take approximately into the, towards the end of the year, November, December, we're hopeful to have comments and actually highway work permit, final comments and highway work permit from them. I think that's probably a little bit ambitious, given some of the DOT turnaround timeframes, but one of the key components of this that I spoke about generally at the last hearing was whether or not there be the requirement for a land donation as part of the project. And the department stated that they have enough property or land in this area, they would not require land donation from subject property. So we're continuing through some technical comments with regard to general grading of the roadway, the new widened section, how much, one of the comments from the department was that they'd like to see the roadway milled and overlaid, so a new top course of pavement from our site frontage to the center line of the roadway. It's going to be a freshly paved area with new pavement markings and striping. So we'll continue to push through that process. It tends to be one of the more extensive and longer parts of any application within the state, so.
Any questions, board members?
Is there any going to put any traffic light there, like what was done on East Main Street at Quick Check?
It's something that we considered early on in the project. The DOT does have some concerns with regard to the proximity of the existing traffic signal that's just off the page to the west of us.
And you have some down problem at the exit right?
Right. And so what we conducted were a couple of different studies. One was a speed study, we wanted to understand the travel speed along the roadway system. And the second was a gap analysis to understand if those signals are creating gaps in traffic that would allow vehicles to come in and out of the site. We provided that all to the Department of Transportation, and they're agreeable to what you see before you, which is a stop-controlled intersection. But again, those signals that are near us on either side of the site really do help to facilitate the in-and-out traffic from the side.
I have a question. That person don't want to see another traffic.
Right. Well, the challenge is when you start to have them very close to the space, they just don't work very efficiently, and it becomes more of a queue forming, congestion forming, and even during off-peak hours, you're finding that you're stopping vehicles on the main line of the highway for a couple cars that are coming off the roadway system on the side of the street. So it's a bit challenging to do in a closely spaced.
Yeah, I think that's what's happening in Middletown on East Main Street. That light is...
It's putting what the best intentions, and then East Main Street is under the county jurisdiction, so every jurisdiction is a little bit different about how they feel about traffic signal implementation. Sometimes from a safety perspective, you can eliminate some types of accidents as a result of a traffic signal, and in some ways it creates other types of accidents. So it's really, it's really up to somewhat engineering judgment, and the roadway systems are a bit different when you compare the connector road here to the traffic volume and the flow on Main Street as well.
Did the county want to do, put that line in on East Main and Middletown? They requested it?
Yes. And you have other signals along that stretch of roadway for the hospital and some of the other projects going in. So in some ways, they wanted to create a coordinated corridor of traffic signals, whereas some, the DOT particularly, doesn't look to implement traffic signal control, particularly when they're closely spaced that they can avoid.
Any other questions, board members? Arthur, do you have comments?
Yeah, a couple things. What's the status of the DEC and review regarding wetlands?
We can't proceed...
Your name for the record, sir.
Keith Cahill, sorry. We need the NECD to proceed with the formal application.
She said you've had some conversations with this?
Yes. We wanted to make sure, obviously, we weren't proceeding in a fashion that we would never be able to permit this project. So we had some informal discussions and meetings, but we could not file a formal application until we receive a NECD.
So you're getting basically a conceptual review and a wink and a nod saying this so far so good?
Yes.
You have a copy of my review letter that the applicant has talked about the first four items on the letter, my letter, which has to do with FEMA, New York State DOT, DEC, and the variances. My fifth comment, I'm suggesting that the board consider retaining a traffic consultant to help the board in reviewing the traffic, even though this is being done primarily through the DOT. I think it would be helpful for us to have our own consultant to take a look at it to make sure that we don't have any local issues that should be brought up.
Board members?
I think that's a bit ahead of schedule.
There's two ways, and additionally, we're also making the same recommendation for the landscape architect. We've worked in the past with John Collins Associates at the Traffic and with Karen Aaron, and I believe the applicant is familiar with Karen Aaron, I see a knowing smile on your face over there. I want you to know if you have a problem, that was Mike's suggestion that we use Karen. But anyway, it's a landscape, a very, very qualified and respected landscape architect that has reviewed this applicant's work in other towns, so they're familiar with each other, and I think it can expedite the matters for the applicant. So my suggestion would be those two consultants for traffic and for landscaping, if that's okay with the board.
Board members? How's the applicant, is he agreeing?
Yeah, we're fine. Jeff Albany from Quick Check Corporation?
You named him.
Jeff Albany from Quick Check.
You already agreed on it?
Yes, sir.
You have thought on that, Mike?
I think you should retain it.
We have a motion to retain two engineers, the Traffic, John Collins and the Landscaping Karen Aaron. To review the applicant's...
The secret. Make that motion.
Do you have a second?
Second.
Paul's failed.
My comment number seven was addressed with, by the applicant in regards to the flood line, they're in the process of reviewing that with FEMA. Comment number eight has to do with our water distribution system. The village has a water line, sixteen-inch main that runs and crosses underneath the Quickway, heading over towards the Good Time Track. From that water main is another water main, an eight-inch water line, which is tapped into that sixteen, and basically comes down the old roadway, which traverses through this site. We don't have any mapping on that. We know approximately where it's located, which is in the shoulder of the old roadway, which is also in the area where they're doing a lot of grading and earthwork. So we need to find the location of that water main to make sure that either it's not in a way of, hey, the proposed construction, or if it is, it needs to be relocated. So we need to focus in on that.
Yep.
And sooner the better.
We've been in contact with the DPW and had numerous conversations, and nobody seems to know where it's located.
Right.
And they indicated that they were looking to do some ground penetrating radar testing to locate that main.
Well, that's a question, I think you're going to need to have to do that.
Oh, really?
Yeah. We don't, that would be something that the village would have to do as an extra. In other words, we don't plan on doing it, and only we're doing it for your project. So I think you need to coordinate that with the DPW, and if you have somebody you want to use for that, we have somebody we have used in the past, so we need to locate that water main.
Okay, we'll coordinate with them, we'll call them tomorrow, matter of fact. We know who can, they can help us out with that.
Oh, yeah. Yeah, it runs, it runs all the way through the site and goes up to two oh seven and ties into a distribution system up there, so.
The eight.
The eight-ish line, yeah.
Does it want to come down from the reservoir?
The sixteen-inch comes down from the reservoir, crosses the Quickway, goes into town, yeah. Okay, but this just tapped into that sixteen-inch.
It was a couple years ago with that, somebody knows and how to go over it.
As long as you're talking to Killings, Dennis and I spend all day just working on the sewer.
How is your expert?
Unfortunately, I can't help you with water. I mean, we were going to relocate that sixteen's line one time years ago.
Well, actually, everything has to be located on that side.
I understand. I was talking about a relocation.
Just some information to provide in regards to this no-long area, so we're clear what that is. And number eleven is a detailed review that we did of this stormwater management plan, and we have some comments to give, but not really engineering issues for the planning board, but engineering issues for the applicant. So the main thing for us right now is to get an update on where we are with the application with all the other review agencies, and also to get that water line located. Those are our major issues.
In February, you issued a notice of intent to be lead agency, no one has challenged that. We consider it finalized as of tonight. The applicant is looking, so we can get to work with the other agencies to get a negative declaration. But I think we're hearing from Art that there's other issues that need to be resolved. The sooner we can get John Collins engineers and Karen Aaron aboard, the better, if they can concentrate on what further information is needed for declaration of significance to be issued, that would be helpful. I'd say go to Dennis and to Art when we have them on, I think a meeting, sitting down at a table where all the engineer, Karen, engineer professionals speak at once might be the easiest way to get that.
And we may have a chicken and egg situation here, because some of the approvals that are going to be necessary, for instance, a DEC approval, which has to do with issues regarding the wetlands, they don't want to give specific review comments unless they know we get a NECD. And so we're going to have to get comfortable with the project to the point where we're willing to grant a NECD, perhaps in anticipation of these other agencies giving approvals. That's why I was asking where the conversations were going. I don't think they would be this far along with these plans unless the DEC has indicated that they appear to be acceptable subject to, you know, a final detailed review. So I think maybe next month, excuse me, after we get our consultants on board, we might be closer to be able to talk about a NECD. But tonight, I thought that this information that we're getting, really for the first time in detail, is more of an informational meeting. It's up to you, though, if you think you want to do anything sooner than that in regards to the NECD.
Board members?
We should be lead agencies, so.
We are lead agencies.
That's done?
You typed it as done, Mr. Cahill.
We voted on that already.
Right, that's what. The variance is done, it's consented to the Orange County Plains Department?
Really, not much of what can do.
Well, you have different engineers you have to hear from, correct? They have to review what's here.
Right. And I think... Get all the details worked out, to be honest with you. I think we need to know if we have most of the issues identified and addressed, and then if the final designs come later. We want to make sure we get everything that needs to be studied, viewed, analyzed, included in the EAF.
Yeah, so they will.
They're talking about six, seven months before.
Yeah, but I think a month, as long as they have all the information to our engineers, we can move forward.
What, just so I'm clear, we'll be notified by the village when we can send the two recommended consultants' plans and the reports.
Hopefully, we'll be contacted in the NECD.
Yeah, I'll give a call to anticipate that, so you can start putting your stuff together right now?
Yeah, well, okay, then we'll send it out to them, where we are, the same set of plans, traffic reports.
Well, you know Karen?
Yes.
And you probably know Phil Greeley.
Phil Greeley, yeah.
Yeah, so that's who we're using, okay?
No problem.
Mr. Cahill?
Yes.
I do have a question.
Yes.
How high is your canopy?
We have fifteen-foot underside clearance. What is, fourteen and a half? Fourteen and a half underside clearance plus three-foot fascia, so it's seventeen...
You don't anticipate any tractor-trailers coming?
To fuel, to use our dispensers of fuel?
You get diesel down there?
Yes. We do have diesel, we have two dispensers, and we're going to have a tank of diesel. But we don't expect to fill tractor-trailers. Well, it's not our business model. We're flowing...
Reading.
Yes, but we want to focus on cars today that would be utilized.
Use diesel, smaller cars, smaller trucks.
Not tractor-trailers. We're not trying to make this a truck stop. And the only way, the best way I can explain this to the board members, because Quick Check has, you know, twenty other gas stations that they operate. Their business model doesn't support fueling tractor-trailers. If we wanted to fuel tractor-trailers, we would do it the right way. When I say the right way, I'd say two high-flow diesel dispensers that would fuel both saddle tents at the same time, so you can get a truck in and out of there and not block up the rest of my business, which would be the other two pumps. It's counterproductive to their business model, they don't want it. And unlike other gas stations, Quick Check has an attendant out front while they're doing it. I know, you know, being self-serve and all, in New York, not everyone does. Well, they're going to have somebody out there, and they will post signs if you want, but we're not fueling tractor-trailers. We would fuel box trucks or smaller pickup trucks, but we don't want to block another fueling position or block a circulation lane because it only has a negative impact to our business. So that's why it's pretty much not in their business model, so it kind of gives board comfort because there's no real benefit from it. Tractor trailer coming in there, fifty-gallon tank saddle tank, coming out seven gallons per minute, it's not attractive to them either. So we're not known in the industry for fueling tractor-trailers.
Is that the hydrocoating for tractor-trailer on that sign?
Fourteen and a half feet, yeah. I mean, if it's common to a DOT spec for an overpass. In the event that somebody's, because we do have tractor-trailers on site for deliveries, the last thing we want to do is have somebody hit our canopy, we want it up high enough. So fourteen and a half feet. And I'll say that because there's a grade change zone, so I mean, the lowest point is fourteen and a half feet. You know, we have about a foot and a half grade change across the canopy, maybe a little bit higher at the end of the slopes off, but that's the intent to maintain a minimum of fourteen and a half foot clearance, and then the fascia itself, so another three feet.
Do you have a guy popping gas there?
During peak hours, absolutely, we'll have somebody out front. And during the overnight, maybe not.
It's different.
Any other questions?
It's different than your other locations.
Sometimes, and, you know, I don't know, do you think they're going to take it away?
Yeah, I don't think there's going to be a total self-service situation. You don't have attendant in any of the others.
It's not possible.
But people have to pay cash.
You say you pay more when, well, sorry, people who put attendants out charge people all.
Oh, yeah, but I'm saying there's no attendant out there. People have to pay cash. Have to go.
Right.
So there is no attendant.
Okay. Any other comments, board members?
One last thing, we do need an adjoining notice, I'll send it to Dennis. We didn't do it last month. There aren't too many adjoining property owners, whatever the list is.
I think he may be here to see. Mark was...
What's the name of this biography?
I just remarked that one of the adjoining properties, name is Markless. We have kept him posted, and we certainly were intent to comply with whatever notice was sent.
You can't say I'm not aware.
He appears to keep himself posted.
Yes, that also.
Actually has it in film.
Even better.
That's even better. Arthur, is there anything else you need from the applicant?
No, right now, no, I'm good.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you guys. We'll see you next month. Thank you.
See you.
Sure. The next month, February twenty-fourth, January twenty-three. Yeah, I don't have it.
I don't have it, too.
Yeah, I can't, I switched on. Twenty-six?
Twenty-six?
Twenty-six.
Twenty-six.
So take care.
See you next month. Unicorn Design.
Thank you, board.
Thank you. Unicorn Design. We have a letter from, what is this guy's name? Mastrononi? Mastrononi, there's an I on the end there.[1713.13]
We have a letter from Tom Master and Tony requesting a two-year extension to the previously proved site plan.
Previously approved.
Yes.
Well, representing.
Steve Estesito, local landscaping architect.
Excuse me?
Steve Estesito, local landscaping architect.
And a very good one of that.
I know, I spoke to him today and I told him I would be here.
He reminds me of the Yankee fan.
That's right. Little Joe. And he asked me, he's looking to get an extension, and he hopes to actually start construction in the spring.
The spring?
The spring.
The coming spring?
Yeah, it's coming.
Can you refresh the board members?
It's a site plan, it's, if you were walking out of Elsie's and there's a vacant lot where it leads to the beaten little.
Right, go straight. Is that hole?
Yeah. With that one? With the tavern? No, no, no. Jack Penning's.
Jack Jenny's. Right course from, you know where the bus station is?
Rockwell, was that, doesn't it?
Well, yeah, Tom Estesito is Rockwell.
He sent a letter already? He's sent a letter, he's looking for a two-year extension. Michael, do you have any information on this?
Yeah, I gave you a letter, I'll give it to you in a moment. The approval was granted in September of 2009. There's a bunch of time limits that are running here. I don't know, did you satisfy the conditions of the approval? Was the site plan signed? I don't even know.
Site plan was signed.
It was, okay.
Is the date on it? I don't know.
Okay, that's all right. The first deadline was the time within which you needed to satisfy the conditions. That's taken care of. The next is construction under the code was mandated to begin within one year. Obviously, it hasn't. That is section 10.1.3.8. You can extend that. The last one is the anticipated completion date, which was declared as, I don't know what it was, I have to look at the resolution. But you're also permitted to extend that. However, the variance, there were a whole bunch of variances that were granted. The one that, the latest of those was March 14th, 2007. That expired in March 14th, 2008. So though I think you can extend all of your time periods, you will first need to ask the applicant to give the variance extended, then come back here and you can extend yours. Because you don't have jurisdiction to do anything. The anticipated completion date originally declared was April 15, 2009. So you can extend that for an additional two-year period, but you got to write to the zoning board, get an extension of the variances, then come back here, maybe grant extensions. If justified is the language, and I'm sure there's some justification.
Where are you seeing this timetable now as far as the planning board is concerned?
The construction deadline is long gone and the anticipated completion date is gone. If you can extend it.
So we can extend that so he has to go to the zoning board and appeals?
You get his variance extended, then come back here.
Is that a problem? Good.
When's the last meeting?
Yeah, Tom was here last meeting.
He wrote the letter the day of the meeting.
He was here for something else.
Oh, he? Oh, no, that's right. He was here for something else.
He was in my kitchen, but he wasn't.
That's right. Now, now he was something.
But at the same time, you get deliveries.
He needs to turn various moments to call.
I'm waiting. Some seats outside.
Outside. Therefore, he's going to have to come back for an extension after he gets the CBA extension.
Yeah, we had a series of variances, so.
Yeah, there were three or four separate times you wanted to.
Yeah, yeah.
Okay.
We were regulars.
Beverage, are we doing, are we doing beverage? Plus, are we doing Old York subdivision?
Mike Walker here is with us, is here tonight, so if we can do Old, move Old York up.
Let's do it. Old York subdivision.
Steve Estesito.
Hello, that's him.
Landscaping.
We've been here, sorry. As you recall, we have probably through the board, cleared our intent to be lead agency, cleared a neck deck, we had a public hearing, we opened a public hearing two months ago. Last month, closed the public, it was open for two months. We closed the public hearing last month. We've had some technical comments from Mike Nuselis. We hopefully addressed the majority of those and resubmitted the set of plans that we have before you today, the 12. And we're here tonight hoping to get to a point where we can receive both preliminary subdivision approval.
Author?
Okay.
Mr. Tully, you can have.
We got three pages.
Does the applicant have a copy of this?
Yep.
No.
No?
No.
I apologize, I'm not doing that. You have three pages of comments, however, two pages of them are technical comments. One has to do with the plan review and the other has to do with the stormwater management. Not that they're unimportant, but I don't think we need to dwell on them tonight for the planning board. There are details that we need to look at with the applicant. Most of them are minor in nature, but they do have to be corrected. I think the two things that I'd like to talk to you about tonight are the retention basin that's on the site and sidewalks. Or maybe we do sidewalks first. No, we do retention basin first.
Which one do you prefer?
I prefer the retention basin. The basin as proposed is what you might consider to be a traditional retention basin. It's going to have water in it, designed to have water in it all the time. And it's located on two lots in the subdivision. And it's, we discussed with the village DPW, they're not, DPW, Mike Nuselis is not interested in maintaining this retention basin that serves just this little subdivision. He thinks it's a use of village resources that is going to take time and money away from other things that should be done for the general population. So the applicant has proposed that this retention basin would be owned and maintained by these two lot owners. I'm not a big fan of that myself, because I don't think lot owners make good retention basin managers. So this, in light of this situation, I had asked that we get together with their engineer to see if we can't change the design of this retention basin and maybe eliminate it altogether and put something else in there. I had mentioned at the last planning board meeting, and asked that the engineer get together with us, that hasn't happened. So I'm raising the issue again. I think we need to look at a different way for trying to eliminate this retention basin. I talked to Steve about it, and today we got a phone call from the engineer, and they want to meet with us next week. Now, in regards to the preliminary plans, something is going to happen there on this lot, on this subdivision, rather, that's going to take care of stormwater management. It's going to be retention basin, there's going to be some other type of feature that will be used to manage the stormwater there. I don't think it's an issue that's going to hold up your consideration for preliminary approval, if you want to think about that tonight. It is something that needs to be addressed as we go from preliminary to final. I've talked to Mike about different ways of ownership, different ways of maybe having a whole subdivision, all the owners there, pay for the maintenance of it. There's other mechanisms that we can use other than we're showing here. But in terms of the planning board, that's an issue that's out there for me that needs to get resolved between preliminary and final. So if you have any questions about that, I'd be happy to entertain. And the second issue that we talked about was sidewalks and what you want to do with sidewalks. I walked the site with Mike Nuselis to see where sidewalks might occur off-site. And it's very problematic because of a number of different things. We've got issues with crossing the road, South Church. We've got issues with topography in some areas, and it's very steep banks off the side of the existing road. We've got some property owners that have actually developed their front yards with landscaping horns, et cetera, right on out, almost to pavement. So it's going to be very difficult to put sidewalks off-site that lead downtown. So I'm just telling you that, you asked me to look at it, and that's what I'm seeing. There's some sporadic sections of sidewalk along the road now, but they're not connected, and some are very poor shape. And we were there looking at the site, and there are people walking along the road. Nobody uses the sidewalk that's there now. So you have to think about what you want to do with sidewalks. The applicant is showing sidewalks on-site as required. We talked about providing an area for children to wait for the bus at the intersection if necessary, they're willing to do that. But anything else beyond that is something that the board needs to discuss yourselves and what do you want to do as far as sidewalks are concerned.
There are two comments.
Those are what I have.
Let's take the drainage first. Board members, any comments?
I don't think it would work if you make all the people try to be in charge of this or maintain, I don't think, you know, a white house there.
They're not going to maintain.
That's out of the question.
Other municipalities do have drainage districts where the people in this project pay an additional tax to maintain that to the municipality. Is there lighting in here?
Yes.
Street lighting? Is there daylight in this?
Well, I think, I think the lighting is going to be the standard lighting that we use in our business.
Argen Rattan.
Argen Rattan puts in, and Argen Rattan will maintain. The village has a contract with Argen Rattan to maintain all the streetlights in the village except for up in Harness, which are special pole and light fixture. And in Argen Rattan, they said, if you want to use those special fixtures, go right ahead and we're going to maintain them. So we have to maintain those up there, and they're paying a neck for Mike Nuselis. Again, it's a specialty item, he has to use special parts, et cetera, to maintain those light poles. I think we said here in this subdivision, you wanted to talk to Mike about that, and he would prefer not to use those lights that we use up in Harness here. If we use a traditional light that Central Hudson puts up, Central Hudson will maintain those lights without the need for a lighting district. We have, the village has a contract with Central Hudson now to.
Argen Rattan.
Oh, sorry, Argen Rattan, to maintain the lights in the village, and this would become part of that maintenance contract.
My suggestion of the drainage, if we're going to look forward to discuss preliminary is to have a condition first that says that before final satisfactory stormwater management plan will be prepared. And that may avoid the issue completely depending upon how it's done. Secondarily, the applicant can approach the village board and request creation of a special benefit district. We did that in Harness Estates, and then the group of lots would pay the cost of maintaining this stormwater basin. And I think it's, it may be both, but it's more likely to be either or, and I've included language for that in the rest of it. Generally, you can't have improvement districts in villages the way you do in towns. But there is authority to create a benefit district, and we did it in Harness Estates.
And that's taxed?
Yes. There's a little itemization on the tax bills of the benefited parcels where they pay the cost of maintaining. Beginning, obviously, it's nothing but a, you know, an insurance. Later on, there's actually costs and period where you can build back the property to the villages and to hold it. But if we do a different kind of stormwater design, it may mean that there isn't any maintenance. I don't know.
Well, let's make this.
Let's make it.
Well, depending on the design.
Right.
I mean, if you're going to do a district, then you've got to have a right-of-way to get back there for the.
Well, we have right-of-ways now. There are right-of-ways because the village is going to take over the storm drainage in the street, it's going to take over some of the catch basins that lead to this retention basin. So we have the ability to get to it if necessary.
And I think the village needs that. They may not want the obligation, but it needs the authority to be here to maintain it in the event, the worst-case scenario of the property goes down.
So it's something we need to work out. And there's a lot of different options, and it's almost like, you know, column A, column B type thing, where we've got to have it work out to everybody's satisfaction. We may also, if you're considering moving along in that direction with our approval, I think you may want to have the applicant come back in within a relatively short period of time, three months, to give you an update on where we stand with this, so that you're not in the dark, and then a year later, they come back and see, here's what we decided to do. I think you want to be part of the process and know what's happening here, so you can have continued input. So my suggestion is that they don't disappear, but they're required to come back in a period of time to give you an update on where we stand with this going to work out.
What's the position of the board when they come back? Do you give them a preliminary or conditional approval?
What's a condition?
What are the conditions they come back? And we have input there.
Right.
Right.
Say it again, the condition to come back?
Well, they're going to have to come back anyway. This is just preliminary approval, because they have to go to the health department and the DEC.
And they need a preliminary approval to move forward with the other agencies. The health department won't look at the water line, for instance, or the DEC won't look at the sewer line until they get a preliminary approval. So until we can, we can move past that hurdle, they can't, they can't move forward with their application. So the other way to handle is you don't give them a preliminary, we wait till we get this thing, this issue resolved, and then you come back and have the preliminary later on. So that's your call.
Well, preliminary approval with the condition that those issues are, before, before final approval, which doesn't hold them up, it still gives hospital average, that's what I thought when he had.
That's on the drainage sidewalks. What do you want to do with the sidewalks, folks?
Well, Steve, you were going to talk to the school district about their plan, if they're going to come in to the development or kind of stop out on South Street, South Church Street.
They're going to reevaluate all of the routes over the summer, but it might, it's likely that they will not come into this, in an effort to shorten their routes.
Make the construction.
Yeah, because it's well, well within the distance that children are going to go to the corner.
Have they been contacted?
Okay.
So in other words, a set of plans have been sent to them, that this is in the making. Okay. And we haven't got any comments back from them?
The transportation department has looked at this, has the plans.
We have a place for kids to stand.
They can build one. You can build one. Well, that was what Dominic suggested, that we put, instead of, we have, it just has a wing here now, is to put, you know, pad, concrete pad where, you know.
Yeah, they agree with that, yeah.
But is that going to be going to lie in the village right-of-way? Is it going to maintain that? And the village?
Do we have a cutout sign of the, of this proposed? Do you have a detail on it?
Do we know what size it's going to be? Is it going to be two by two or 20 by 20?
Probably more like a 10 by 10. Well, let me just, let's talk about sidewalks maybe. There's three alternatives. The alternative is, the alternative that's been on the plan that we've really discussed and ironed out, you know, months ago, and that's what we continually propose. I believe Dominic suggested that, you know, in an effort to address the queuing or waiting for the school children, is to put a tag on it. There was some discussion, discussion last meeting about issue connecting, connecting this project to the village. I also was out there with Art and Mike today, and it's, it's a tough, it's a, it's a, it's a project. It's a project to get a sidewalk down, that's down the north side of South Street, South Church Street. But it could be done, but, you know, you, but the applicant has no authority to do that. The applicant can't go on people's property, the applicant can't go in the village right-of-way and make these offset approvals. But what we can do is, if that's something that you think is of value, we can instead of, in lieu of doing onsite sidewalks, make a contribution to the village and say, okay, if it's X number of dollars to build these sidewalks, here's a check for X number of dollars, and you go do a sidewalk project that has more value village-wide than just putting sidewalks for 18 houses. You know, I drove down the street and did many sidewalks in the village, and we all survived.
Horse and buggy, buddy.
That's true, horse and buggy, they went a lot slower that way, into whichever maneuver they had. They didn't have lights either. But here we have it.
Michael?
What do you think? Here, I'll talk to you.
Well, what is.
But if there's a third option, is, I think.
Well, I gave the third option, which is in lieu of constructing onsite sidewalks.
And we could, you could use that money for sidewalks someplace else besides near this project, if, if there were sidewalks necessary some other place in the village that, that the money, I think that the money could be used for a sidewalk project downtown. Correct me if I'm wrong, but you can't buy someone's hands to put a sidewalk in front of their house. Even if we said this money should be allocated to do this project, to run from that project into the village.
You certainly could by code. You could require all residential, and even all commercial development to always provide a sidewalk in front of its property. The law code does not.
That's what, you mean, that's, that's what we're missing here. Can't go knock on someone's door and say, we want some sidewalks. Is that all right?
That you can, but you can take money and do that for.
Consider it a project. Consider it a project. Oh, no, I'm not saying that you can, the situation, particularly the project Lawrence had. I'm saying the easy way to do it is if the village wants sidewalks, is to always require them. Then you don't get into, is this the project that requires them? Is this not the project that requires them? Some municipalities determine whether sidewalks are appropriate based upon the density of development. And in a town where you have a rural section where houses are on four lots, sidewalks are not generally put in. When you're in a village environment, you often do. You hear the complaint, the land is talking about this before, sidewalks to nowhere, but you got to start somewhere. So it's really a policy decision that has both the level of the village board to think about and you. If you think the sidewalks are necessary, they always require this developer to put them in front of its own property, if that's helpful, and worry about the rest later on. If you don't think that it's meaningful that they'll never be used, then it would be silly to require them. Another choice might be to put them on the other side of the street where there are some sidewalks already, so that donation might be used for that purpose, that acrosswork, if appropriate, maybe what you, there's a lot of ways to approach it.
18. 18 houses.
18 houses. So you have to, let's just say, two kids per house? Let's just say.
1.2.
36. 1 point, was it 1.2?
Yeah, we use 1.2.
We have 36 kids?
I've been in touch with the village board to try to find out what their philosophy is in regard to sidewalks.
If you think the sidewalks are necessary, they always require this developer to put them in front of its own property, if that's helpful, and worry about the rest later on. If you don't think that it's meaningful that they'll never be used, then it would be silly to require them. Another choice might be to put them on the other side of the street where there are some sidewalks already, so that donation might be used for that purpose, that acrosswork, if appropriate, maybe. There's a lot of ways to approach it.
Eighteen. Eighteen houses.
Eighteen houses. So you have to, let's just say, two kids per house? Let's just say.
One point two.
Thirty-six. One point, was it one point two?
Yeah.
You got thirty-six kids?
I've been in touch with the village board to try to find out what their philosophy is in regard to sidewalks. To put sidewalks in, if you look over, like where the Goshen Car Wash is and the gas company. But that's, you know, a lot of community development money has dried up, and we've had a lot of political changes in the village itself. I haven't heard back from the mayor about that, and, but I propose that this board speaks to the village board to try to come up with some kind of a plan for sidewalks in the village, because this is, this is new for the village to be developing this side of town. There, there's just been kind of piecemeal, one, one house at a time. So, you know, I think this is, this is a work in progress. I think it's open for discussion. And if the developer is willing to put money aside or agree, or both, to, to agree to develop future plans with, with the village, I think we can, I would agree to preliminary approval with those two conditions, with the drainage and then with the sidewalk issue, that we would come to mutual agreement in the future.
Sure. I mean, because obviously, we have to have a village board lay in on the, I mean, we're proposing what we all agree on, you know, the sidewalks internally. We go down through, you know, Plan B, we're doing all sites in lieu of these, we're fine with that.
Yeah, okay. I mean, this is not going to prevent you from getting started, correct? You've got a lot of work to do before, so that'll be just trying to sit down with the village board to look at community development money, to look at grant money, to look at what we want to connect. So I'm.
I think if either of these things, drainage or sidewalks, are going to change lotlines and create a problem that would require the preliminary approval to be amended and go back again.
And if it's a little money, you'd have to sit down with the village engineer, five hundred dollar bag. Any other comments, board members?
When are you going to get started? What's, what's your plan?
Just going to, it depends on how long it takes to get the balance of the permits. I mean, our goal would be to probably start a year from now, but my guess is it may take a little longer than that to get some of the other permits that we need. What do you think, Steve?
What other permits?
Well, we have, we have two, we have two plan approvals. We have, we have realty subdivision approval from the health department, which right now, given the economy, they're kind of just waiting for things to happen. So, I mean, those, those, those tournaments have been very quick. The opposite in the spectrum, we also have a municipal extension of the sewer line, and that's the D E C review. And they've been just the opposite. I mean, it's because they've been, you know, because of state cuts, they're understaffed. So that's, that's why I've been told by regulators to call my companies when I see that the status of our projects are. So, I mean, that's, you know, I would say the realty subdivision, you know, it's pretty straightforward, municipal, municipal water extension, and we know it takes probably six months, but the D E C could take it two years.
So, so we have time to look at the.
Yes. I think Art's point is, don't wait until you have those. Year is, is almost there to start talking about this.
Well, what, after Art had mentioned to me today that the engineers had not contacted their office, I made sure that that happened. And I know Frank's scheduled to be, John's.
Schedule for next week.
Next week, so that's your word.
The pad, is the pad we're speaking of? We might want to consider wheelchair accessions to cover pads. Things required. Oh, yeah, so all the sidewalks.
Yeah, we'll, we'll have, we'll, we have to.
Okay. Mike, is there any special conditions?
Sure, let me go through the resolution. First, we'll need a sign-off letter from Art before final approval of the issues that he's raised in his column letter June 21st. We'll note that we need to have the sidewalk issue resolved to the satisfaction of the village prior to final approval. The resolution will recite that the other agency approvals are required to Orange County Health Department, water main extension, realty subdivision, D E C for the sewer main extension. I don't know about Army Corps activities. Do we have a J D? Yes.
Well, we have, Orzella's been out there. We made, we have one minor field adjustment.
So I'll say either a J D or a nationwide permit, whichever applies. You just have to demonstrate approval before final. Are we going to need a speedy general permit for the stormwater activities or the usual all utility lines below ground, et cetera? Then we'll talk about drainage before final approval, a revised stormwater plan that satisfies the concerns raised in Art's letter. Prior to final approval, the applicant shall approach the village board and talk about the possibility of a benefit assessment district. In the event that the village is not inclined to do that, at the very least, for the easement, giving the village the authority to enter into whatever drainage structures there may be to maintain them, but will not impose the obligation. You will at the time of final need to declare an anticipated completion date. I don't think that's needed now.
Mike, while you're on that, I think we also talked about having the applicant come back and give the planning board an update in regards to stormwater, maybe within three months?
Yeah, hopefully within a month.
Right.
But let's say within the next two months.
Okay.
Okay, I'll add that. And you will have to post fees in the park, park land at the time of final.
Off-site drainage? The public care, we had comments on that?
That's been addressed.
Okay, board members, do we have a motion for a preliminary approval? We have a second.
A second?
All in favor?
Thank you very much.
Are you going to do any back work? You're not going to do the turnaround?
I'm finally going to go. Put on my, my. Thank you very much. Good night.
Good night.
Good night.
Thank you for the help.
Drainage job from McBride's?
Yeah.
Nice cars. He pulls in. No, he came into the meeting, he came in, his car was, was, he didn't walk in on his driveway, he walked in on the wall, and now it's just now. Okay, last but not least, Beverage Plus, representing Beverage Plus.
Steve Esposito, Esposito Associates?
Yes.
And I also have, Lane's, Lane's, he's part of the.
Okay.
Beverage Plus.
Beverage Plus.
Who's that?
This is where the.
Bagel store.
Bagel store.
Bagel store used to be. Still is. Or the beer store.
You know, I think there's a, they give a code that you can change the layout so many times.
Remember my last one?
Michael, you have comments on this?
Thank you.
No.
I'm sorry, you're waiting for a while there. Michael's neck, but I'm looking at it.
No.
Okay, let's, let's stay right here and do it. Let's stay at the stairs on that floor. Come on, boy, let's go.
What page?
Go to page, like, three, or is that go to page?
Page three.
Okay.
Two of them. Well, last game, yes, especially. Yeah, the last game. The last.
The last time we were here, we had proposed a standalone building on the, on sort of the corner of this lot, and still renovate the building in the back. Here's, here's, the part, the site is in the flood. For us to build a new building.
What type of building? Fifty, eight hundred?
Hundred. So for us to build a new building, you've got to be two feet above the flood elevation. And unfortunately, the maps that have been adopted, I still believe to this day are very correct. All right, fourth, at four, four thirty, that's the flood elevation. The site is at four twenty-eight, four twenty-seven, so it was about two or three different, different.
Three feet difference.
And you get a two feet above that elevation, so the new building would have to be five feet above existing break. Very tough to do if we wanted to keep the, to maintain, and the idea was to use that buildings to maintain the streetscape that the existing beverage building creates. So that's the rule. So, but to do that, it's very tough because you have no room to transition between the proposed finished floor of that building and the existing sidewalk or the existing building that's happening. So what we did is we said, okay, fine, let's look at the existing building again. And where the bagel stores is actually, that was, once a building, and then it got added on to, and added on to, and added on to. That building is a, is a, is a mason, that part of the building is a mason building. It's actually in pretty good shape. What we're going to do is demolish the balance of that, keep the existing, if you think of just like the bagel shop, keep that space, and it's about nine hundred or a thousand square feet. That will be the building component that will stay along drainage avenue. It's a pre-existing building, they can self-finance it, they don't have to worry about trying to get financing in the flood zone, which is important. And then they get grandfathered having to comply with the regulations. Same thing with the back of the, the back building, the steel building, is a pre-existing foundation, pre-existing building. They can self-finance the renovations, and that building's awesome. So, and, and they are really interested in, in moving forward in this. They really want to knock the building down, they really want to give the renovations to that back building. This is the least, path of least resistance. If we, and we also are maintaining the two curb cuts, if we go into the DOT right of way, we're probably two years away from doing it. And that definitely doesn't work. We want to keep two curb cuts, we want to renovate the buildings, we want to redo the asphalt paving, redo the landscaping, start the streetscapes, and this is the most expeditions route for them to take to get to their original.
So what you're saying is they're going to demo this, like those.
Demo like three quarters of the building, two.
This stays.
That stays.
This will remain, is this an addition or is this part of the existing?
It's an addition.
Pre-existing?
It's an addition.
Now, let me ask you something. It's an addition.
That building.
Isn't that the flood plain?
Remember the garage is a good time park.
I'm not talking about good time park.
Have you ever been to the Outer Banks?
Have I ever been to? I just came back from France, buddy. I, I can't help you.
Yes, yes.
You can build buildings, you can build buildings in the flood plain that can actually flood. It's going to be like a mezzanine. It's not.
It's going to be on stilts.
It's going to be, it's going to be like on stilts. It's not going to be on stilts because, in fact, it'd be on stilts, but it's going to, but it will flood. It will have the ability.
It'll flood underneath.
Yeah, it's going to be, so it's going to be a mezzanine type arrangement. So it's going to be instead of.
It's above grade. It's above, it's above your.
It's above our grade. It's above our grade. There's a steel building in the back. And they're going to, that's what they're going to keep the.
They have, they have a beach back there.
Don't you have a variance issue if you enlarge that building?
No.
No?
The, the building, the building is, the building is.
I thought it was a non-compliant building.
It is. It is a non-compliant building.
You're enlarging.
Well, if you look at the aggregate, the, it's, the addition is less than what we're carrying now. So, I mean, you have to look at.
But that was the question, is, is it's not conforming along that side, and it, and they're just continuing with their non-compliance.
Well, we're going to ask for a waiver of the side yard setback. The side yard in the C S district, as in most projects that we do in the C S district, we asked this board for a waiver because there are zero lotlines. I mean, it's the village, it's like the Unico building. I mean, we, you know, we requested this board to have a zero lotline. This one is a non-comforming use, if you look at the law. This along the healing property line, right now, it doesn't conform, and we would ask that, and we could go right to the zero lotline, and we would ask that.
What do you think with the front door, Dan? Show me on, Dan?
This, this.
They have the wrong plan. What page?
Yeah, here's, here's, this is the existing building. So all of this past area is gone.
Oh, it's gone.
This is the original.
This was the original?
That's one of the original, that's one of the original.
I'm not sure which one's the original building.
No, I don't think so.
What do you think, Michael?
I think Steve's correct on the side yard issue. I'm still wondering about, kind of the issue with Kelly Jean's again. We have a, an undersized lot. No, all of the issues, you've got a non-compliant building, parking, all of those things, we're making changes here now. There are the two issues. I, we talked about this the first time you were out, in terms of what uses were there at the time, the ordinance, remember that magic date, nineteen eighty-three?
Nineteen ninety-eight.
Yeah, whatever it is.
March nineteen eighty.
Yeah, you've got to provide the table, all that stuff, to make sure we're okay. That's the issue that I think we let go, as you're doing all the different redesigns, because you've got to do it for this one. So what are the uses? What were the uses that make sure that we have adequate, that we have no greater parking demand than what was there before?
Yeah, I, I did research the archives and found the most recent, the, the last, if I don't forget, you, you kind of remember the infamous ice machine? That, well, that was, that was like in ninety-six, so that was before, that was the last approval. So we had that, we can do that analysis, and it's, you know, it's not a problem.
Mike, you mentioned Kelly Jean's. We didn't change the footprint there.
No.
No, but you changed the use.
Right.
Okay. Just leave this building here and change the footprint. I think it may, you know, it may, it may have another dimension to it, but even if we weren't changing the footprint, we're changing, I don't even know what the use has ever been in the back building.
The last one was, half of it was retail, there was a small office, and there was half storage.
Retail.
What was the approval? I mean, what, is that, that has, that's what it has to be.
That's what it was.
What they were using it for, God, no.
That's what was, um, when, when, when Ferante, when we got the last.
Nineteen ninety-six.
The ice box, the ice machine.
Ice machine in front of the building.
And when we got, when they did the bagel shop, that was like, I think it was ninety-six. And that was, that's the guidance that we're using with the analysis, because that was the last approval.
But all you're right, it's, the building is changing, we have to look at that issue regardless. That's a different. Is there any other, the use part? Right. Is there any other non-compliance other than the side yard setback?
No, the, the steel building is a non-compliant building.
Right. Now, that's, you're changing.
Right.
And in what way is it non-compliant?
Uh, it's a hundred and two feet long.
And that, that's the only gold table restriction that is viable? And you're making it shorter?
No, we're not, we're not, we're not, we're not making it any longer. We're not, we're not, we're not extending.
In that dimension.
But you are extending in the width.
Width is okay. Square footage is okay.
And this is okay in this corner?
The way it is now. I agree with that, that's a Kelly Jean issue.
What about the setback?
The only setback you have is the side yard setback. I'm going to ask you to say zero lotline.
Now, I think you can do, but the question is, I'm remembering that I have the code written, that the non-compliant building section says, "Do not be changed by any, something like visible external means whatsoever."
Well, no, it's, what it says is that, but, but, the, the, it doesn't prevent you from...
You're changing just for this piece?
From making change.
Making change.
Wait, are you changing the building or are you taking it down?
We're doing both here, right?
There's two buildings driving, the building in front that's taking it down.
The building in the back's coming down.
So we're putting ahead a needsment for the, it's back here.
Oh, you're not taking the stolen that?
Oh, not touching it too.
Oh, okay.
But the, the front one, the whole thing is not coming in.
No, just, just the...
But he's getting this, but in reality, he's getting this, or a piece here, right? And then his setback, he must go to zero. This is where he has the problem here. This is where he has the problem.
All right, here's the second. It says...
Board members?
Nothing in this article should be deemed to prevent normal maintenance and repair, structural alteration within, moving or reconstruction of, or enlargement of any non-compliant building, provided that such action does not increase the degree of or create any new nonconformity with regard to the district regulations, bullet table provisions, or required cost tree parking requirements pertaining to such building. Any action increasing the degree of or creating any new nonconformity shall result in a loss of protected status. So he can enlarge the building, he can change it, as long as no other noncompliance comes into play. And the side yard one is one that's either or, either zero or ten, so the ten-foot requirement can wave. So I think what Steve's saying is correct. But you still need to do the Kelly Jean piece in terms of the impacts indicated that protected these paths.
So what do you want from us?
I always ask that question. You have, you're not proposing any work whatsoever in the state right away?
No.
So sidewalks, driveways?
We're going to tie into the, when the curbs return, when curb returns come in, we're going to use those same curbs.
So in that way, you're hoping to avoid any DOT...
If we, if we have to do that, we're, you're two years away.
Those entrances are both going to be ins and outs. We're not talking about one way in.
Just since they have been operating from the very, what's tweet is the one?
If he has to go to DOT.
Oh.
Well, it's something we have to decide on. One way in, one way out. What's best suited for the village?
Well, I think, it's what's suited for the village and what's suited for the, for the project as well. We talked about having one intersection so that we didn't have conflicts with what's happening across the street, because there's a, there's a number of intersections, a couple of intersections across the street. I'm a proponent of one way in and one way out, but that means if you drive around and there's no parking spaces, you're, you're, you're going out, you can't make a U-turn and go back to look for something, so... But I would prefer to come in one way and out the other, if we could. I don't think that if you cause DOT approval to, for us to require that, then you're not changing anything. But I don't know how the site functions with one way in and one way out, but I think it would make things a little easier. But it doesn't have to be, it's just a comment on my part.
We talked last month about the streetscape and how you wanted it to look. Were some of those improvements going to be in the DOT argument?
No, we were doing all those improvements.
The, the area where the building is being torn down is going to be pretty much a vacant lot now.
It's going to be, I assume, a parking, traditional parking.
Right in here?
It's going to be a lawn area.
I was going to follow that. It's the existing building.
Snow storage, lawn areas, three days, it should be the building.
Because when you plow your snow, you have a place to put it. It would be just a grassy area. Yeah, yeah, but it's going to be on the far side of the sidewalk and, you know, do you have to just go dump it and load it there?
Push it up.
And this is the truck, the truck loading?
Right, that's one of the things that the board requested, is putting the truck loading on the land side.
Okay. The, the area where the, the existing building, if you see, it's, it's a vacant square, basically. Nothing's going in there, so grass.
Village, landscaping.
Well, I looked at the landscaping plan, it just, it doesn't show any landscaping.
No, there's turf, that area is turf, so we're going to, you know, you're going to have snow storage on, you know, that you can enter it from the east side.
Snow storage in here?
Yeah. It's a lawn area. We want to let some green elements.
So we're looking for two to three year guarantee on the plants, right, Stephen?
What's that?
Two to three years guarantee on the plants. Salt on the...
Pushing salt up there?
Yeah.
Salt resistant plant?
Last...
I mean, we use urban trees all the time. Trees right downtown Main Street, a little, you can take a little piece of sidewalk out like that. I mean, that's, you just have to get very variety.
You have any reviewing on this, Arthur?
No, I, I didn't do any comments until we heard what the presentation was, so...
Okay, this is the new one.
That's it.
No changes.
No changes.
Okay, we're going to look into the comments that our attorney has indicated.
Moving the Kelly Jean thing.
It's in the ADD, we have a letter from...
You have two letters from Pete Up.
He doesn't have a letter on the latest.
Well, he does.
He has two.
He has two. He has one letter that basically...
That's what we got today.
Second. Well, first, the first one was basically, I didn't get a site plan. So he just had the original drawings from the architect. So I called Pete Up and said, "I'll mail you a site plan." And I met with him last week, and we went over the plans. And, you know, one of the key components, oh, two things. We'll all do the site plan thing first. A very, he was a proponent of us keeping that piece of the existing building in the streetscape this year, that year. He also was a proponent of us, you know, establishing the tree line and the treescapes and, you know, didn't really have a lot to say there. The details of the, I'll say the architectural details, this particular architect hasn't done much work in the building negotiation and was a little unfamiliar with the ADD requirements. So Pete kind of weighed in on that. I was the architect, Jerry Sherman, from Washington. So I sent Jerry the code, he's got, you know, it's really some material issues, mostly it's material, for the most part. So that was it. So he's got really, and what Pete suggested is having a workshop, and I'm not sure if that means maybe a tack meeting. We can get Jerry here, Pete from another room, and let it talk architecture.
Board members want to see what it is?
Well, you have a set of, we, we've submitted the drawings to you. But like, for example, and I don't...
Do you have them? Can we look at them?
Yeah, there's like cultured stone on one of the buildings as a, as a material. Now, it's not that you can...
Are we thaw from this? This is the first, actually, this is his first application right now.
Actually, I don't have one.
Elaine's upset, he's thrilled.
That's right.
He just wants to go on.
But just, but as an example, they have a, like a stone veneer.
Will you bring them next one?
Yeah, well, we're going to, I'm going to have them revised for this, so they comply with the...
And I'll, I'll contact, instead of tack meeting, call, visit to Mark.
Steve, do you want to join in on this? Yeah, that's what I was going to hand you, but I didn't.
I wasn't.
Now, I, now I know you meant by, well, they have concerns with, you do have plantings in the front.
Yes.
Okay, of course.
All right.
Okay. Any other comments, board members?
Yeah, I just want to go back from the, you mentioned something about water going under a building and all that kind of stuff.
Don't worry about it.
Don't worry, you're free to relax.
Well, I'd like to get an answer from it.
The addition, the addition to that building in the back.
Right.
That's going to be basically up on stilts.
Breakaway walls or something like that?
Yeah, exactly.
Yeah, they're, they're breakaway walls.
I didn't know what building you were talking about.
It's, it's just this piece right here.
They're testing the variance for this. No, not for that, he wasn't testing the variance.
That's what I was asking.
He does have to get from us, not a variance, you know.
I'm making sure that he's within the parking demands of the ninety-eight, ninety-eight...
March ninety-eight.
Ice machine. You're going to be showing...
You need a waiver, maybe that's what...
Handicap, some of the drawings.
Yeah, yeah.
I don't have to totally a waiver. It can either be zero or ten.
It's not a waiver, right. It's just you, you, we can be...
Our board has a waiver.
Can I ask, the, the, the building in the back also is an ADD review?
Well, he has plans for both of them.
Right, but that's an ADD review as well. So, and this addition with the stilts, that's going to be reviewed...
By the architect, right. Well, that's, that's really a building, building permit, but it's the, the, it's really the finish.
And then we're going to see that, right?
Well, you, you already have them, but we're going to make some changes.
I don't, I don't have them. I don't know what it looks like. I really can't remember.
The first set of drawings, second set of drawings. The building that you're not taking down, the bagel place, will look like the other building that you were building on the front?
Yes, yes. That will be going to be...
But, but Steve, you know, you've come in here numerous times, so every time you came in with something new, the old one went in this basket.
Oh.
So, you know...
Dazzled.
We need to see again.
Again, they've been submitted, they were submitted three months ago.
It's going to be revision certain.
We have a letter from Pete Up, they're going to be revised. So the next time you see me, I'm going to have a new set of drawings that comply to the ADD.
Who's the architect?
Harry Patel.
Harry Patel.
That's going to come in next month.
You seem upset about that.
No, it's just, see, it's, there's a communication, I mean, I can have him come in if you want me to. He's an incredibly pleasant...
He's a nice guy, yeah.
Really nice guy. I mean, you know...
He's a beer.
What?
I said he's a very nice one, I'm buying beer.
Buying beer, yeah. Give you a glass.
Is that young kid?
No. He's there.
The young kid is, is Harry's, the kid that always works, the young kid? He's Harry's nephew. And the girl...
Is his name Patel, too?
I'm not sure. And then, and it's his mom, yeah, yeah, okay.
They're all family.
Okay, so we'll have a set of drawings, architectural comments from Weldon App.
And a new site plan? I don't know.
No, no, we'll have, we'll find...
Site plan has to indicate on the parking, handicap, so forth.
Yeah.
Okay.
So we have minutes.
The side yard.
Jerry.
Thanks.
I tried, Steve, more confused than I ever was.
Great job, Steve.
More confused, great job, you can please the hell out of you.
Looked like a strike.
I haven't liked you in a minute.
Yes, it's a good meeting.
When did I, I'm sorry. I was making a hello. Job, Elaine always does a great fraction of the time.
It was a lot shorter than this.
A lot shorter than this. She started at seven thirty. Well, did you get it?
Because she made a motion at the chairman vice chairman.
As my wife... You want a cup of coffee? Tell you where you can get one. What you got, huh?
Quick question. Does the board have an objection if another table is set up on the opposite side so Mike and I can have a little more space?
You want to sit on the opposite side for Sue?
Something you said...
The tent's here, it's really tight and...
I made that motion.
So, no, not in a motion, but would you have an objection to that?
No objection.
Okay. Because I know a lot of times presentations are made over that way.
I hate change.
You want to say that again on camera?
For operating...
When are you going to turn that thing off?
When you adjourn.
All right, okay, buddy.
We'll try at least to see how it is.
It's just fine.
Are you going to set the table up, Mr....
Yeah, well, I think Sue offered to talk to someone.
Oh, boy, now you're in trouble.
We've got to go through proper channels.
You're really trying to be ready for another...
Neighbor clock, please. Okay.
Okay, so...
All right, we have minutes to approve. Any comments on the minutes, board members?
I accept the minutes.
I'm waiting for comments first. Are there any comments? We have a motion.
I made the motion, we accept the minutes.
Do we have a second?
Second.
What was the thing? Are there any other comments, board members? Make a motion to close the meeting.
I made that motion.
Do we have a second?
We have a second.
What was the thing? Very good. Now shut that gate.
Thank you.